You have all the members present. Darcy, did you send out August minutes? I don't.
I sent them to you.
And did I send them back to you?
No.
Okay, I don't think I ever got them. I looked today, I've been so busy.
That's fine, we can table.
We'll have to pat, yeah, we'll table those next meeting then.
I'll send them out.
Yeah, I, I, I looked back and I just didn't see them in the email. I went, searched the emails from you. So we'll go to, um, old business. Which is the application for shoreline zoning permit. Carol Smiley. You replace and expand the existing camp. Dennis Douglas here for him. We had a site visit, if you remember the date. Bill Montag came. Ray and I was there for that.
I went, I went on my own. I went on.
We'll have to discuss that issue kind of later, I think I should, but anyway. Okay, any change in what, what you're proposing?
We have been changing.
So of course, the issue in any, in, in this matter, this camp is, what, about fifteen feet or less? Store. So we have to determine whether a rebuilding in its present location, well, yeah, whether in a present location, this building would be set back to the fullest practical extent. Right now, there is a holding tank being used for septic. Other than that, pretty flat site.
Do you have any application?
Location for holding tank? The opposite corner of that lot?
Uh, you only have one design here to the holding tank.
When you have a case, it's still the holding tank.
Yeah, that's on that, and if you look at the date, that's the existing app, that's the only one that's on file, it's both from the town record, so that's not where the holding tank is located, you saw on the site where the holding tank is.
Yeah, it's a holding tank from the building.
Right, so the design that's on file with town office is an old one when they approved that back.
Okay.
Back in, uh.
There's no plan at the.
Nineteen eighty-nine.
I guess, there's no plan right now for septic.
This particular application wasn't proposing a new.
To use the existing holding.
Idea is they'd like to have that option down the road someday to be able to put a waste, you know, a waste system in, but right now they plan on connecting to the existing, uh, holding tank.
I guess I, I need some clarification because under chapter one thousand or our shoreline zoning ordinance, under non-conforming structures. I think I discussed this. Notwithstanding, but other than that, under twelve C E, it's the notwithstanding paragraph A above, if a legally existing non-conforming principal structure is entirely, entirely located less than twenty-five feet from the normal high water line body, then something can be done. So in reading that, my interpretation is the backside of that building has to be within twenty-five feet.
It is.
It's twelve, well, one corner is twenty-seven feet and the other corner is thirty-one feet.
No, but the front of it. If any part of the, I think, I think that is triggered if any part of the building is within twenty-five feet, it triggers that section.
There is, uh, the section above is virtually the same as that clause with seventy-five feet. Even if the building wasn't all twenty-five and. The most restricted part is the twenty-five feet, so I just.
So then you have to, then you have to look at determining whether the building reconstruction or replacement meets the setback to the greatest practical extent, you look at the criteria.
Is any type of foundation involved and it has to go back to its extent.
Or, or even with an expansion, it has to, you have to, we have to consider that criteria.
That I haven't been able to find, so tell me where I can find it. The place I found it is, you know, related to the foundation.
Well, that may be where it is.
Proposing just an insulated footer essentially is solid base under it.
So, so the maximum footprint, you know, can't be expanded greater than eight hundred square feet or thirty percent, so that's on page three. Maximum height.
What I'm beginning with is on page four.
So then, um, so then you go top of page five and determining whether building location needs to set back to the greatest practical extent. Planning board shall consider the size of the lot, the slope of the land, potential for soil erosion, the location of other structures on the property and on adjacent properties, the location of the septic system and other onsite soil suitable for septic systems, and the type and amount of vegetation to remove to accomplish the relocation. So my, my look at this is since there's going to be a new building put there, some type of new foundation-like structure that I think utilize the existing holding tank. If the building were to be set back, say even an additional five feet, it would take it back some. And it wouldn't have too much other impact. I think the, there's a birch tree that might have to be removed. Uh, I don't think the pines would, but I, I think you're going to have to put a new electrical entrance on, and when you do that, you're probably going to have to trim some of the pine trees.
Yeah, if you relocate that building, there's maybe that from the neighbors because of our district of, of other trees.
Not that, not that.
Yeah, there's seven trees, we can go over and do with them the sizes.
Well, there was, I'm only, I'm only, when I looked at it, the only tree I thought if you move it back five feet that would have to be moved, removed would be the birch.
On his property, so.
You know, I, I took, I even took a photograph.
That's, I understand.
I mean, that's, that's my, that would be my perspective. And then that leaves the potential, I think, for enough land left there for parking and for potentially a septic system in the future. There's a, the chance of you being able to even to use the connection pipe to the holding tank, once you take that building down, you're probably going to have to replace that pipe.
Yeah, and then we'll replace the connection.
So I think, I don't know, is, does five feet make sense or no? I mean, or some distance, that's the issue, I think.
Yeah, my thinking was more towards the gravel pad that certainly didn't use for parking. Parking could be moved over, but that would put it further back on a loft and still be able to use the holding tank.
But, but then they may be limited, I mean, how far back are you talking? The, I think the more we go back, the more we restrict.
Yeah.
The possibility that there will be a septic system there in the future. I mean, we don't have a plan that's current, so we don't know what a new system would entail, because that old plan from eighty-seven or whatever would have to be redone, you know, you can't rely on the old plan anymore. They'd have to do a new design. I mean, I think there's some good things here, because the new design changes the slope of that roof. Um, and I think when Bill was there at Montagle, he kind of indicated that. But, I don't know, I guess I'd like to hear what other people think.
Anybody talk, if anybody go in and figure out about the septic system with, talk to Ernie or, or talk to the state?
Didn't talk to Ernie, I talked to Andy.
The state regulation states if you have, if you're be redoing substantial change of the structure and even moving it back to the most practical extent, and it has a holding tank. Holding tank in some instances can remain and be used, but there has to be a registered copy of a new septic system on file. Because when the holding tank fails, you have already authorized the, the location of the septic.
Well, I thought that as long as they're not, say, putting in another bedroom, that they could continue to use.
That's not a hundred percent true.
I, I think David is correct, for example, the, the house next to us on the point, when it did burn.
Yeah.
And they were building back on the same, the same footprint and moving it back a little bit, it had a holding tank. I do believe they weren't allowed to do that without having a valid septic design.
Even to put it in the same spot.
Isn't that true, Rick, about?
Holding tank is not an approved.
Say that again, what a.
When, after the house burned and you're going to reconstruct it, even though you moved it back a little bit on the foundation, they had a holding tank there before. But they weren't going to be, as I understood, they weren't going to be allowed to do that and connect to the holding tank. They had to put in a septic system which is in the front.
I don't think, I don't think it ever got to that point, what it was is they wanted a regular septic system and back years ago, they didn't have the science to, you know, come up with a design to make a system work. Now they do, so I think you ended up putting one in as well, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, it, it, no, it didn't come to that, they wanted a system.
Okay.
A new system, you know, that, so they wouldn't have to worry about pumping a holding tank every so often, yeah. It never got to that point.
Unfortunately, shoreline zoning ordinance doesn't.
No, it's in the plumbing ordinance, it'll, that, but that triggered, if you remembered correctly, anybody who had a holding tank had to send a letter to the codes officer whenever it was pumped, so it could go on file that it was pumped regularly. And, and it was on, the house on Larry Drive that it started with.
Well, if you're, if the, so that's going to happen regardless of whether the building is moved. There's going to have to be some kind of new plumbing permit issued. And, and that may require a.
And, and that's what I'm thinking, outside of what your regulation is, I know when the, when they go to apply with Ernie, it they have to supply a septic system. And, and that would, might have to go back to you guys for approval. Depending on the size and lot.
A lot of it done by a soil designer, I have a problem having a soil designer go there and design a septic system, but I can actually, I'll pull the state law, go and see if that's actually required under the permit, not sure. You know, for sure it isn't, I believe we've done these, it's a seasonal, it's a seasonal, it's not a, it's not a year-round.
Yeah.
Uh, living, so there's some other provisions there, so, um, I mean, if he's going to spend money, get a septic design and have it on file on paper, if he's not looking to put the septic system in, then, you know, that's something that, I guess if it's a state law, then he'd have to.
I don't believe it is, but we'll, I'll, I'll pull that together and I'll have.
Well, we would only say as a condition of approval, you know, get some kind of clearance from the licensed plumbing inspector. Because, you know, the thing about getting a septic design, if you're not going to do it right away.
Two years after.
You have to do it again, so that's what kind of.
It's recorded though.
It's, it's. It's recorded with the state now.
The system he has, that's existing.
Um, you know, Andy said to check with
Just to check.
Plumbing inspector, but he said he just took the course and he thought if the holding tank is grandfathered, that it's okay if it's not a substantial change in the use, but I don't know, maybe. I couldn't, I couldn't find anything in the ordinance.
The thing is, you know, where our ordinance reads is, look to rebuild, look for that for some type of foundation underneath it, that needs to go back to the best place it could. The thing is, is is that this is a town, how far it needs to go back, or he needs something to come back with.
No, we, you know, the planning board makes the determination what the, can it be? Is it set back to the fullest practical extent? And if we say left in its present situation, no, it isn't, then I think we say, you know, it should be moved back so many feet. Whether he decides to go you know, one side or the other, as long as he doesn't interfere with his neighbor's setback requirement. Question is, do we require in this instance that this be set back? And for, as they proposed, they proposed to put it right back on its present location, we have to say, is that the fullest practical extent?
Right.
Their concern, as I understand it is, if it's moved back certain extent, and they want to put a septic system in, they're going to be constrained now that that building is too far back. So do we find some kind of middle ground or?
The concern would be the power, you know, again, the trees aren't on his property, so they have to get, we're, we're causing the issue with the butters, they've already, they're, as you see, they're not here, nobody, they, they're happy with their, if you move it back, you're actually creating more, you're losing the right, the one that's behind it, the one beside it, you never.
You know, I mean.
If you look at practical, from that standpoint, it's worse, it's, it's really, we're not asking to do anything, again, with four feet of knowledge, thirty percent on the back of this. Five feet wouldn't hurt it, I guess, you know, with the probably.
Move it a little.
Probably move it in the middle of the lot and you're going to affect so much.
They're going to have to put a new electrical entrance on that anyway.
I thought, no, his service is already mounted. He'll put it, that's kind of dawn on me.
Yeah. It's just, you know, looking at it now, you know, this is, this, those wires are coming through, I mean, not that that's one of the considerations.
No, I just say it's the butter, it's not his property.
Yeah, uh, it's, it's not a perfect setup in terms of.
For most wires, because I can't put it on.
No, probably not, no.
And it's a private line in, they're responsible for that if something happens.
Not the MP, so they don't.
Is there a adjusting easement in the D four power lines, you know?
They're hooked up, so probably from way back, it must have been, they get booked, but it's overhead, it's not underground, it comes from neighbors. So any movement.
Kind of line.
I see that guy needed to go through that. And you've got to keep it clear.
Yeah, it's going to touch, more than, I had seven trees, but five feet, I didn't do five feet, I was looking at further away.
Yeah.
Maybe a sensible approach, you get that defined, then.
Well, I think the, I mean, we're not even sure what the.
Well, the thing is, you don't, I, I agree with Ray, says you don't know what kind of design a septic system is going to be, because you don't, this soil is. You don't know how big it's going to, needs to be. So even if.
Yeah, but I think it's not great out there, it's, I mean, if you.
But you can do, there's things you can do now that, it can be a lot smaller system with the science they got now, um, it's not inexpensive, but, um, it can be done.
I do reverse osmosis systems that are two small refrigerators that go in your basement with no, with no, with discharged clean water comes out the side of, I mean, there's all kinds of systems you can do.
Right.
What you can do today in today's world for septic is almost no site you couldn't put a septic. But how feasible is it, they're going to spend eighty thousand dollars to put a septic in, they're probably just going to stay with the holding tank forever, you know? Since it's seasonal, they're not living there year-round or anything.
Yeah, I think, you know, we, we would just make, as one of the conditions of approval, just get clearance from the licensed plumbing inspector that that holding tank can continue to be used with the new structure. And then puts it in his, his court, because I, I see nothing that gives us sort of the authority over that. Does it? I mean, I don't know. Um, I mean, if, if there's an existing system, certainly. But we don't have, and the existing system we have is just a holding tank.
Unfortunately, I guess, you know, the fact that some type of foundation's involved, and we've got to address it. Like simple as that, they can't sit where it is.
No, I don't think five feet is going to create a real hardship for the, I mean, I, that way, if it can connect to that holding tank, they're going to still be able to do that pretty easily. That I think will be for the plumbing inspector to decide.
Did you say that when you have a holding tank, that you have to register when it's, it's left out?
Well, I think, you know, we had this over on Cocknowag and recently at another project where they didn't have a holding tank, they have a, uh, a porta potty. And I think we made them just get a letter, file a letter that, who is maintaining that and on what schedule.
Okay, so that it's scheduled and that's reported.
Yeah, well, there's, there's something on file, again, whether anyone enforces it is.
The pumping company is chief record of all that when they do any, you know, their own, but whether that goes to towns, if town required, then they should be able to send that, I guess, I haven't seen that before, I know the companies themselves are required to keep all their.
I got one every year from the pumping company. Eight in full.
Yeah, telling you how much and whatever.
Any other thoughts on this? Motion to find what the fullest practical extent would be, or?
Motion to find what the most practical that is.
Would to be. How far should it be moved?
Five feet.
You have a second? Further discussion.
Please bring it out now, Steve.
So Larry made a motion to find that the setback to the fullest practical extent would be to place the new building and its foundation five feet further back than the present structure.
Five feet or a minimum of five feet?
A minimum of five feet if they want to move it, but see, he's adding on a little something to the back. So, you know, that, to do something to be able to connect if that's allowed by the plumbing inspector. So Larry made the motion, Dave seconded. So all in favor of that finding? Opposed? Four one. Then a motion to approve the reconstruction and relocation of the or a new structure with the design, roof design that was presented.
I make a motion to accept the new structure design.
And all in favor of that motion? Opposed? You oppose, Ray? Four one. Conditions of approval. We talked about, you know, get approval from the licensed plumbing inspector, the use of all the tanks. And that he'll tell you. Get a building permit for the structure.
So if he can't, then, I mean, so did you say we'd still get a design to have on file for a future septic system or no?
Because that's with the law.
I think that's, if the plumbing inspector says he has to do it. Follow the recommendations of a plumbing inspector. Usual soil erosion controls during the reconstruction, you might have to put up silt then. Might have to get a permit by rule, because it's within, you know, with, there's any soil disturbance. So I would make the motion for those conditions. Discussion, anyone feel other conditions are required?
We talked about previously the stone drip edge.
Yeah, stone drip edge and.
Isn't that, is that standard conditions, Steve?
Well, it's pretty standard for us, it's not on the list of standard ones, but we, we can use the language we've already used. All in favor of the approval with those conditions? So we'll get a decision out to you.
It's out the package next week.
Just looking at new business, I, I suspect that nobody told Mr. Rennie that he could come in tonight. And that's one of the things with our system, that's with nobody in the office all the time.
I didn't even think of it, I just assumed that Andy would.
Yeah, Andy's been out a lot this week.
He's on, he's on the fire department, correct, so they have, do they have a fire meeting tonight on Thursday night?
Oh, Lance's?
Yeah, usually Thursday nights, is it this Thursday?
Yeah, every Thursday.
Well, maybe we just tell him to come into the October meeting.
Yeah.
Which I won't be at, I'll be uptown.
I'll get in touch with them.
I mean, I, I think as I understand the issue, it was hard to tell from his application. But I know there's a significant wetland on that property or in that vicinity. Or in that vicinity. It was hard for me to determine from the application. What exactly. Where everything is.
Is that the one where he does repair it?
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the left side of the road, if you turn off and self mon.
See, the trouble is, uh, on. Andy's new computer, when he pulls up resource protection, that green that shows up. Is more than what was on the hand painted one two weeks ago, so.
So, yeah, I think probably we're gonna have to have a site visit to see where that wetland actually is.
That's interesting that you say that, so you're saying that that green might not be actually accurate whether.
Well, I don't, I don't think the hand painted was really accurate.
I think what he wants to do is put an additional on the corroded design.
The question, can we? Can you set up a. Site visit now and contact the applicant or do you have to have him?
I think we have to have accepted the application.
Okay.
And I hesitate to do it when he's not here.
Okay.
But I think, yeah, we've got to develop the system that. That we.
Have to collect money for the.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, because he didn't.
Wasn't very descriptive. Ride project, different to build it.
Any thoughts about it's a subdivision also like. Oh, no, no, never mind, that's the next one coming up.
Yeah, I mean, he wants to put on a, it's like a. Twenty by fifty addition. We have to determine that that is setback enough from a butter. And is that in a wetland area? Like he's doing a slab under it.
It just needs more work from, because he can reduce the wetland. By a certain percentage with fill, because there's so much of it. That he could go to D B and get a permit to reduce the amount, but he doesn't want to do that if you guys. Make him do, you know, if it fits with, you know, he doesn't want to have to do that.
Yeah, so I think we just table this the next meeting if everybody. Have a motion to table?
Make a motion to table, sorry.
I I think, yeah, I was telling that. Yeah, I just, I've had so much stuff going on that I couldn't, I didn't really think. No one may have told him. That his application came in time or when the meeting was or, I mean, we put it on the agenda. I don't know whether he might have called and checked or. He did get an application. Oh, yeah, uh, all in favor of table? We did get an application from. Couple over in Scott Drive. It was for a. Two lot subdivision. Well, I called them up. And said, we can't approve that, and so what what the issue is. They're trying to create two lots, but one would be nonconforming. So. Uh, it's, they can go to the appeals board, but the appeals board shouldn't approve it. But they. Had a lot of grievance that things had been approved in that neighborhood that was in. Somebody better get rise on my right away, I don't know. That was that. So we discussed at the last meeting. Planning Board Rules and Regulation, so I did a regraft, I think I emailed everybody. Tried to take the information that. We discussed at the last meeting. About the organization.
Now you add the August meeting.
Yeah.
Which that makes sense.
Right. That that we have to. Collect our officers because sometimes there's a lag. Uh, between when the terms expire and the town meeting and. I remember the changes I made.
Something like number E as well.
Don't know whether. Some of this might have been the same, I try, I tried to clean up the language a little bit, make it, I thought it was a little more. Weird. And the duties of the vice chairperson person I made more kind of explicit than what was in the other one. And then the secretary. I'll be responsible for the records of the planning board, she'll see that they are properly maintained and stored in the town office. Available for review and inspection. It's expected that a professional recording secretary will be available, take minutes. Share agendas and send notices.
First of all, secretary, all that stuff, properly maintain the stores in town office. And that, it ain't gonna happen. That doesn't make sense. I think it, it should be a secretary, recording secretary.
Well.
I have no idea how things are stored down there. And how anybody on for the board expected to go do that, because that ain't gonna happen.
Well, the question is whether we're always gonna have a recording secretary.
If you don't, if you put it in the ordinance. It says recording secretary. And then it forces the town to make sure it meets our needs of planning.
Well, then do we need a secretary?
That's right. It should be a recording secretary, should eliminate that because a lot of that stuff. Any of us as a secretary will never take care of this duty. Down town office.
That's all you get.
Well, that's what I drafted, so we can talk about that. My concern is what happens, you know, but how are we gonna function as a board? I don't know, Larry, it's. I'm I'm not expecting you to do a lot, but maybe to know where things are. In a pinch.
If you ask, if you ask for anything, there's no way I'm gonna, I'm gonna find it down there, I have no idea.
Well, Darcy can tell you now where stuff is because she and Dave reorganized our records hopefully.
That's why it's it's gotta be somebody that's part of the town office. You pilot recording secretary to make sure that things are properly filed, you know, if we ask for it, they're able to find it. You can't expect anybody from this board to go find it downtown office.
Can't expect anybody in that office to find it. Correct.
That's that's my definitive, yes, but the thing is, is whose fault is that?
That's this, that's. The higher ups from from them. But then now it's.
Yeah, it's it's up to the.
I'm not saying a word.
Well, I know.
From the public.
So I know I got a call from, I talked to Andy this week and there was something about the colonial. Subdivision or whatever that was called. And he couldn't find it, he couldn't find any of the papers, I don't know if he was looking in the right place, I said, why don't you check with Darcy? She may know now where those things are and she could tell you.
It's under Reggie Bauer.
Uh, well, and see, that's probably the problem is that this guy. Has a different name that did the amendment. And so there needs to be cross referencing, I mean, I found stuff, so I emailed him. Unsigned copies that I had in my computer file. And I went on the registry website and downloaded a copy of the amended plan.
It's a colonial, um, subdivision.
Colonial Estates.
Where was that?
Norris Hill.
Norris Hill.
Okay.
So that was a guy that that originally had a ten thousand square foot. Building and then came back and said. D P rules have changed. And and I can get a bigger. Footprint. And Bill Monika looked at it and agreed. And. So we approved it, but he had, he never did anything right away, so I think now he's trying to.
He still didn't like the building envelope. Because the building envelope didn't include taking all the trees down in the front. And he wanted to look at Dwight Mountains, he wanted to see that. And he couldn't unless he took the trees down, so then he he moved to Blue Road.
So anyway, but that's just the id, the issue on the record, yeah.
They started to build, and I said to Andy, you better check that. Building envelope because it looks like it's awful close to Norris Hill.
So I don't know, I mean. What do people feel about this language on secretary? And we could, we could say the planning board doesn't have a secretary, just, yeah, we could say. There will be a recording secretary who will be. An employee, nonmember, uh, employee or contractor, nonmember of the planning board who will.
You could do that.
Can I make a?
I have a special question, what if, what if like somebody on the board didn't want to be the secretary, what happens then? If so, so nobody wanted to take that title or duty?
Well, it would be a mess, I mean, if we didn't have something in place to.
Right.
To say.
The thing is, is, you know, back when this was developed, we back. Twenty five back and things were different.
Right.
But as times change and requirements and requirements from the state, different things, things have changed.
Right.
So.
Darcy. What was yours?
My, my. Not so much on this decision, but in my opinion. And I can, if Dave is all for it, I can work with him, there should be something called a continuity book. Made. For. The secretary position, whether it be a board member or a. Aid secretary, that there be instructions. That can be for the code enforcement for anybody that walks into that position, all right. This is how things are filed, this is where you file it. You know, Dave and I spent a couple of hours talking about this, but.
Tried, but he doesn't have the time.
No, I can do it, I'll do it, I'll make a book and said, all right, you know, so if if anybody, anybody. Should come into that office and say, all right, I'm trying to find something. This is how, these are the steps, this is what the recording secretary does, this is where everything is filed, you know. How you had set everything up, which is a great system, but nobody else knows it but you, because nothing's written down. So if we write things down. And make, it's called a continuity book, so if. If I should drop dead, if he should drop dead and somebody walks into that position. They will have clear, precise instructions of this is the procedure, this is where things are filed, this is where you find it. You know. That, that type of a thing, and I don't, I don't mind.
Somebody has to keep that up, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Right.
And a lot of this stuff is generated from the office, not from you, not from here.
Right.
It's generated from there.
Right.
This letter that's supposed to come in on a septic. Who but this?
Go.
Where does it go?
Yeah, exactly, because there's.
They're gonna get it in the front of the office, they don't know what the hell they should do with it.
They're gonna stick it in some, yeah, they're gonna stick it in a bin somewhere, and if it goes to Justin, he doesn't know what to do with it, so.
And they're not even gonna look at this book. You know, the girls out front, you know, are busy, you know, twenty four seven, so they're not gonna do it. Andy doesn't have the time to do it, I I don't know what the answer is.
Well, I, I mean, it's a good idea, I think, to do it, and then if it's, then if it's.
And then it'll fall back onto something.
But then if it's saved as a, yeah. You know, anybody then hopefully can find it.
That's right.
You know, all the board members can have one and say, you know, could have turnover. Hopefully someone could say, oh, yeah, yeah, I got the copy of that. You know, I don't, I don't.
I'm just making.
I don't care about this secretary position or. Why not, I mean, things have really changed, I mean, a lot of. Like Winthrop. The secretary of their planning board receives and deals with. All the applications that come in. And they have kind of an electronic filing system that you. You can file. An application electronically.
The applications are all on file.
Yeah.
I went into. Mark can say, yeah, what about this, that this. Yeah, location and that, or by the name, he goes, oh, yeah, here it is, here, I want a copy of it.
I mean, I don't know if it's, if, 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 if it's a person in the town office or I, I. I mean, I did that last year or the year before, I had to file something. And I thought it was to through the secretary of the. Planning board, but it was done electronically, which. Maybe a little easier in terms of management. Deal with all the.
Well.
It's there.
Well, it is, and if 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 Mark went on to bigger and bitter things, the person that stepped in, there's. A procedure to how to find it, there's multiple keys to that file.
Exactly true, now, in Monmouth, and everything. Up until Andy was analog. I mean, I did it all by hand, I didn't use the computer, because I didn't have the computer when I started, so I learned how to do it without the computer, never upgraded. Yeah, to write permits and stuff, yeah, I got computer, but everything else was. Took the piece of paper, stamped it and put it in a file.
Well, now, you know, the good thing about any plans that are. Provided. That go to the registry is we can always. Find it.
Yeah.
If they can't find anything, I think in the town office. Sounds like.
It can't be any.
You got my package.
I think, I think they just. No, I'm not gonna say it, I'm on camera, shut up.
Well, do we want to just say on the secretary that's. The the planning board shall appoint. A recording secretary who will be a nonmember aid. Position.
Contract vending or whatever, whatever, however you want to work.
And that, so the only officers then that the planning board will have. Would be a chairman and vice chairman.
You don't have a vice chairman here either in your draft.
I do. Page two.
You didn't forget about.
I didn't get off page one.
That's, that's not expanding.
There's not much there, I mean, we could add more, but that's.
I think you gotta type along page one, I think. Were you alternate members?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, two, like, yeah, row two and put in three, oh, good.
I don't know. No, I didn't, okay.
I have an extra copy of this here with me if anyone needs it.
Okay, yeah.
Here's the old one. That way you can match, I already matched it up.
This is, this is the new one, let me just make sure. And the agenda on the back. Yeah, so just going through the two. Term of each regular member alternate shall be for three years. Except that a member appointed to fill a vacancy. Will be for the remainder of the departing member's term. Pretty standard. And I didn't change any of the attendance requirements. Then, I think that's the same. It's in the present one, number D. I think that, I think that's pretty much the same. We changed the organization to the August. Know whether I change the language and be a little bit.
C U did, F U did.
One meeting, at least one meeting. The second Thursday. There may have been something. We could have another meeting, but I didn't want to say that that would be particularly where. And we, under duties. We don't have any duties right now, but we could. Listen, I, I move a pair of written decisions. Like then they're probably all there. But we'll just make some changes to that recording secretary and talk to the. Yeah, the. The section five is somewhat redundant, but I, you know, it kind of specifies. Time and place. Second meeting may be held fourth Thursday in the month is more. It should be open to the public, except executive sessions. No votes may be taken at a public meeting. Or may not.
Do you have executive sessions?
Huh?
When do you have executive session?
Not very often, but if we have a lawyer here, say.
Eighteen years, you've never had an executive session.
Well, I don't know.
I think if it came down to an attorney, I think the board select will probably be involved in that one.
Yeah.
Never.
Yeah, we've done, we've done pretty well. A lot of towns do. I think you put it in. A lot of this. I think when you wrote it, Dave, originally it was probably from the. MMA manual.
Came.
Pretty much.
Pretty much from the MMA manual.
And yeah, so B. Uh, Roman numeral five B. I might have added something here. That last, well, I, I said it should be put on the. Town website calendar since we have that now. Then the other thing I thought is members shall endeavor to be present at the scheduled site visit and. You know, we have a lot of situations where. People are going and looking at sites on their own. Which I think is okay if it's. Doesn't happen very often, but I think. A lot is missed if you don't go to a site visit. And I know people's work schedules and things make it difficult, but. You know, a lot of times we're discussing what. What's. What we see and talking to the. Owner or his contractor, her contractor.
And the butters.
And the butters.
The only time you guys get to talk to the butters, because they never show.
Yeah, yeah. So I didn't want to say. It would. You know, I, I, you know, I just wanted to put some kind of strong language to encourage people. I think, you know, just. If possible, I think we should all try, you know, try to schedule a meeting when people can. Attend and. So that's a change I made. C, I think, not sure I made any change in that.
I missed the order.
Huh?
You just changed the order.
I might have changed the order. E. I think I might have changed that to make it clear. About a tie vote. Less than a majority is a rejection. I'm not sure that was in the last one. I added a section on reconsideration. This, this is pretty much from the manual. That MMA puts out. You know, we had that reconsideration. Which the town attorney said we could do. But I, I thought it might be clear, make it clearer how that would work.
So basically says they have to come within the sixty five days of the decision we made.
Yeah. The board, well. We can reconsider a decision made at the prior meeting. And at the request of the applicant or butter or other interested party or on. Basically our own motion. The board must notify the applicant and make a decision within sixty five days of the original decision. So that might be the next meeting or the next, next meeting. Uh, make, conduct additional hearings, receive additional testimony. And then what are the grounds for it? Well, those are the two boards, reasons that factual errors. Or a misinterpretation of the ordinance. Or not following the right procedure or ruled on something we really couldn't. So I think that. Some of this makes sense. You know, we can make changes to the recording and look at it. I'll get it to you if you wanted to decide it at the next meeting. Time, if you want to wait till November, I won't be at the October meeting. In the other state.
Wait until November.
Yeah.
So I'll just put in here that you revise and we'll review in November fee. Is that good?
Or, you know, revise it when. We'll, we'll put it on the agenda. And if you guys say, yeah, let's. Want to talk about it, we'll decide, you know, what. Whether to take it to table at the next meeting. Still need to work on our fees. Kind of started and I've just been bogged down with a lot of stuff. What bothers me more. Is the last two amendments. Is the. Comprehensive ordinance not been incorporated. I think the, the first change wasn't. All that significant. It, it is in a way. It, it was. Telling people that they had to file applications by a certain date. You know, the Thursday, Tuesday before. Week before the next, the meeting. And. You know, I mean. Nobody, nobody in the town office. Does anything. About these things. And then we have the amendment to the solar. I started to look at it and said, oh, could I do this? And it takes a lot of time to. Make a copy. You gotta make a copy of the ordinance or have a copy. Then go back and. Add in.
Mix and match.
Mix and match and. You know, I, I tried to do it at home. And it, you know, at the office, I have two screens and that's a little. A little easier, but. God, I hate to think. I don't know. I don't, you know, if, if someone. At time or. I think Jason, if I said to Jason, we need to have this done. He would probably say, Darcy, you could do it if you wanted to try to do it. But it's, it's a task and.
Isn't the select board working on a new comprehensive plan?
No.
No.
No, that's separate.
That's different.
That, I'm talking about our ordinance that, that subdivision is in and commercial.
Oh, okay.
And it's, it's a mess. Because someone comes in and wants to put a new solar in. Are they, you know, comes into the town office, are they gonna get? That amendment?
It's there. I don't know why.
Yeah, well. To me, it's a failing of the. Administration in the office that you have an election. And you approve a change. Well. Who, you know, if.
What happens?
What happens next?
Where does it?
We, we never had to, we, you know, we never had to worry about it. It got done. You know, whoever was. In charge took care of it or had delegated or whatever. I talked to Andy today and Andy wants, would like to get together with us when we do any changes to the ordinance, because I think he may have seen a few things. And the other thing that. We haven't done is looked at. What changes do we need to make because of the housing bill that passed? That might allow for accessory structures and. Other housing units on.
Same lots.
Same lots.
Same lives.
Yeah. So my, I think what happened. Is that the legislature gave the towns a little more time. But I, I. I don't know what that is. But I told Andy, maybe November we could, maybe he could come to that meeting. We could talk about some things.
Have a question.
Yeah.
Speaking of solar. What is the timeframe? From when an application? Um, I'm thinking the, the application for. The solar array that's supposed to go in behind the pot barn.
Yeah.
And. The last time, it was today's Thursday. I, I was on South Monmouth Road sometime this week. And that field has been hayed. But there doesn't look like there's anything else.
They've been, they've been active. They got a, uh. They got their driveway permit. And they requested a nine one one address last month.
Okay.
So I think they have a year basically from approval.
Okay.
And after a year, they gotta come back.
Have to come back. All right.
If they haven't started.
If they haven't started.
Because they, nothing, I mean, I remember when we went, it was winter.
Yeah. But we approved it this spring, didn't we?
I think so.
Okay, so they have until next spring.
Yeah.
Okay.
It takes a long time to get their federal paperwork and all the state paperwork.
And you're gonna buy the material, then you get the materials.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Andy Smith thinks AD Electric site, that they're still interested in doing something, but we haven't seen anything. He said there were surveyors or people out there. So.
That's right behind Lance's.
Yeah. Yeah. I thought Lance is.
So Lance is gonna be between the couple.
Yeah, when I heard there was an application in that area, I thought that might be. There's something there, but.
The panel heated, it reduces heat load.
Yeah.
Uh, there is another application that came in that go on the agenda. Snyder's, another one of the Snyder's.
Yeah, that's like the brother, something.
Yeah. So that can be on the night. Again, that came in.
After. On the eleventh, I think I got that.
Yeah. So. I thought we would have enough.
It came in on the eleventh?
September, uh, September eleventh. Yeah.
Okay, because somebody. Signed it on the church.
Well, Andy put it down, is receiving it on the eleventh. And I think he paid a two hundred dollar. Permit fee when he submitted it. I have it all in the file. His receipt and everything. One of them for the, for the November meeting.
Well, those people on Scott Road pay two hundred.
Okay.
And so Andy is gonna see that they get their check back or. Or get a refund.
Did you advertise it?
No, no, it came in. It, it came in this week. After the Tuesday, I think. And I just looked at it, or maybe it came in on the Tuesday.
I think I faxed it to you, didn't I?
Yeah.
I faxed it to you once.
No, Andy emailed it to me.
Oh, he did he?
Yeah, Andy emailed it to me. And. I didn't get to look at it right away, but when I looked at it, I decided to call the woman. The number that was on the application because it didn't make any sense to me. So they, they won't be coming in.
He's even got a permit by rule.
Which one?
Simon.
Yeah.
He knows what to do.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
I have something under public comment when you get to.
Yeah.
But these applications. Did we or why aren't we, uh, timestamping the application?
Well, do they have a stamp in the town office?
One would hope so.
I would hope so. Initialed it.
Yeah.
When it came in.
Yeah, yeah.
So we had a record of when. You know, so it was.
Yeah.
It was in one of those, you know, it was always on the cover of the blue folders, you know, the folders that Darcy.
You know, when you've got an agent that's actually, you know, representing the owner and everything and.
You guys got, got to. Depending that we set that ten day rule or twelve day rule.
Well, it's.
Five day rule, whatever you do.
There was an amendment to the ordinance that put that in place.
Nine days, David.
Nine days?
Yeah, I, I used to say ten, but it's not.
It's the Tuesday. It has to be in by the close of business, Tuesday, the week before the meeting. And.
But he's not in until Wednesday.
Well. That's what Linda, the town manager, put in.
He works on Monday and Wednesday. So how, how are you gonna do that?
Well, and someone in the town, when, when anything gets filed in an office.
It goes on his desk.
They should timestamp, they should date stamp it, receive it.
Then you have to talk to the town manager.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause that's not happening.
And. It's not a, it's not brain science. You know, it's not a. Whoever opens the mail or deals with.
But if Andy doesn't come in on Wednesday, she's not gonna get it until the following Monday. Which is the week of the meeting.
No, Darcy's trying to go in on Wednesdays now, right?
I go in on Tuesdays.
Oh, you are on Tuesdays.
I go in on, I can go in on Tuesdays, so.
You have to be there at four thirty or five o'clock.
Where they have to call you to say, oh, something came in.
Right.
And is that a big deal?
Well, if they timestamped it, if it came in on Tuesday and they freaking stamped the thing with the date and the time that it received and put it on Andy's desk and he got it on Wednesday.
No.
I mean, I'm not gonna sit there all day just waiting for an application to come in.
But like last Wednesday, he didn't come in. He was at class.
Yeah.
Then I don't know.
And Monday was a holiday.
Yeah, exactly. There's just lack of communication all the way around.
Problem of not, not being there, you know, not the same person there every.
Yeah.
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 It is.
So you have to work that out in, in, in that letter, in that organizational thing, you have to.
Yeah. Yeah, there's gonna be a policy and procedure.
Yeah. If this.
For everybody.
Go to, go to two.
Right, exactly. Something. I've done lots of continuity books, so. Just dotting the i's and crossing the t's and letting everybody know what their responsibilities are and what they need to do. If this happens, do this. If this happens, do this.
The other thing that's going on is, uh, related to the comp plan. If I had been dealing with this company, I think they're out of Yarmouth. And it was all about staffing. And we talked a couple of weeks ago. Uh, your name is Ben Smith, this company, he's mad. Oh. Well, we just put out some proposals. What was supposed to happen is he and town manager was supposed to do a letter of understanding or something. It's never happened. And then our planning board was so. Functional until we got Darcy. We got things in line again that I didn't push it, but I talked to him a couple of weeks ago. And he's interested but busy. And so he put me in touch with another person. Works on her own. And she lives in Bray or New Gloucester. She's working on a, a plan for Powell now. So we gave her access to our Google Docs. I sent her some information. So she's gonna get, she said she'd look at it, get back to me. So. Hoping we can get the comp plan going again. And, you know, we may have lost some members. So I don't know if anyone on the. Planning board wants to be involved. And I know. Ray, you were going, Dave and Bonnie. I think Mark Burgess has been appointed or agreed to.
Yes.
Be the.
He's the rep.
The rep for the.
Tim's, Tim's but.
Yeah. And I think Donna Seppi, she took a new job, but I think she's still interested. Andy is still interested. Dave Lewis, I've talked to. Don't know if Jim moved out of town.
I think so.
So hopefully that will get going, but I don't know what, what she's going to give us for a number, but she thought we should send out a new survey. And have a couple of public meetings. You know, she was going to look at the sections we've written and I told her I thought a lot of the sections were in good shape. Demographic information from the census, I don't think was ever properly updated. And future land use is sort of the baby one to finish, so. Anyway, that's an update on that. I can't, can't remember the woman's name, but she sounded very interested and.
Put it down, but I don't.
Yeah, it begins with O.
Yeah.
It's Isabel, I think her name is Isabel or Isabella, something.
Yeah.
But it's not O'Donnell.
Not O'Donnell.
Not O'Donnell.
Well, hopefully, I mean, Ben said he would kind of help her to the extent, but he had some projects and he wasn't sure. You know, I talked to her timeframe, we're probably talking November of next year. Just goes on and on. I don't think we could get it done by the town meeting. I mean, there'd have to be a big push that everyone wanted to meet regularly. So what I hope is we'll have a meeting with her and I'll notify everybody who wants to attend. Good winter activity. But that's public comment?
Yes, I, I have something just to throw out there. I'm not a hundred percent sure how you guys feel. Um, there is a cabin on, um, Cognawagon that happens to be, it was built in the mid eighteen hundreds. It's the first known cabin built on Cognawagon. Uh, and it's still standing, barely, but it's still standing. Um, the owner of the, new owner of the property wants to do something with it. He's using it as a shed. It's not habitable. Uh, it hasn't been habitable as long as I know, so at least sixty years it hasn't been habitable. Um, we used to play in it, but that was about it. Uh, it's down the lake from me. Um, he wants to either get rid of it or make it so it's structurally sound anyway. He's going to continue to store his life preservers in it and, you know, that kind of stuff. Um, it's not more than five hundred and fifty, maybe five hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, but it's two feet from the water. It's going to be repaired, so it's not a tear down and rebuild.
Yeah.
It's just a repair. Uh, of course, it's less than twenty-five feet from the water, so it's going to get a permit by rule and all that other stuff. But do you want to hear it or not?
Well, if he's just repairing it.
Just repairing it.
Yeah, I don't think.
Doesn't have septic, it doesn't.
It's grandfathered, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah. So we'd have to get a, we have to get a permit from somebody, code enforcement.
Yeah, got to be a permit from code enforcement. Cause they're gonna, they, they.
Are they gonna?
They're gonna lift it and, and put concrete rounds under it. Yeah, they, you know, the, the sills are gone.
Well, that's the issue, that's the issue, Dave, if they're gonna lift it. Can it be moved back?
They're not lifting it, they're jacking it up. And put something under it. I, you know, it's, it's semantics, I know, you know, that's why I, I want to say. Can it be moved back? Uh, if you guys tell them to move it back, he'll tear it down.
Yeah.
And then we've lost that piece of.
Yeah, that, my question is, um, is there a way that we can designate it as some kind of special building?
It's in the, it's in the book, you know, in the, you know, in the Monmouth books, it's in a couple of those books. There's a picture of it, I think, even in one of the books. So historically, it's there. Um, I personally don't think it's going to be lifted more than to put a concrete round.
Thing underneath it, so it's not sitting on the ground.
So it's not sitting on the ground. If you want to consider that lifting, then.
Well, it's not a foundation.
It's definitely not a foundation. It's, it's not a.
I would, I would let.
It's just going to, in, if you determined it or defined it a different way, he's just going to replace the piers. There you go.
Yes, but it's, it's still going to be on TV. It's a cabin masters re, rebuilt. So you know what, how they do that.
So Cabin Masters is going to do it for him?
Yeah. For twenty-five thousand dollars. Some amount of money, you know.
It'll be on TV.
You know, everything costs twenty thousand, you know, have you seen any of them under ten thousand, twenty thousand? No, no.
Of course not. And even, even that figure, I'm sure Mr. Grant would agree, is way, way low.
I mean, he's doing the firehouse museum in town for nothing. It's going to be on TV, so, you know, TV is paying for it.
Yeah.
Being a seller.
Yeah.
Cabin masters.
Oh, okay.
I mean, is it? I don't recall seeing anything. I have the books. I could look it up. I mean, is it in any way kind of an interesting or attractive building?
Probably not. Right now.
It's historical, does it get a plaque?
I know. I doubt it. Used to have ice out dates in it.
There's some good party stories about it.
I, I, it might have had, um, flying eaves on it when it was originally built. It doesn't anymore. They probably all wanted to go off.
Yeah.
On a new roof at some point in the sixties. You know, they, they trimmed that, just trimmed the rod off.
How far back do the ice out dates go?
I have no idea.
Okay.
I think they were all transferred to the, to the building in town.
Okay.
Because Arthur Pease took it over and, you know, in the forties or fifties, and he got them from there.
So Gavin Masters bought Knowles lumber.
Yes.
What they're doing there.
They're moving their operations from Manchester to over there.
They're, they're not, they're moving their office. Uh, they're, they're setting up a a space in the middle section where the office was to, um, entice people to come in to take a look at where's that they've taken out of buildings. So if they sign you up for a job, they'll send you there. This is what we have to offer, used and new. Pick something and we'll put it in your house.
Yeah.
It's like a, like an antique shop.
Something, whatever was in Chase's barn. So, um.
Is the wife going to put horses on?
I know. They did build a wood shop. They, they used, they never used any plywood, so they used one by ten and one by twelve half-lap lumber pine. And they've been buying it, um, and the price has gone crazy. So now they're going to buy trees and mill it there.
At the old know.
At the old know. They're building tiny, right now they're building tiny houses there.
Yeah. Did they get any kind of permit from, from enforcement? Is it a change of use?
It's, it's, it's lumber and they're still working.
I don't know if it's a change, you know, it's, they're still going to sell stuff out of there. So I don't know if it's really a change of user. There was an office there, so that you can't change that.
Yeah.
You know.
What if it was? You know, it's one of those things of technically, if there's a lapse of what, a year? That nothing happened, you know, Knowles was closed and then.
That's up to the gal that's doing the, the, that the town has to do that.
You said so.
No, the, uh, that shares the office with Andy.
Economic development.
Economic development.
Reagan, LaRashaw.
LaRashaw. I don't know if she's put her, put him on the list or not.
Yeah.
So what do you think? Should I just want to make, take out a permit?
Just go get a building permit.
I'll let them know.
Trying to think if there was something else. All right. Yeah.
Have you filled the? Have they advertised it? Do you know?
I haven't seen anything advertisement. I mean, I guess John Dunn did send me a mail. Decided not to accept. He wasn't happy. He wasn't. I didn't really get into it really about attendance. I think that was the biggest issue for the select board. You know, you know, they wanted standards. I think with this new, well, present board a couple of years ago. To know that.
Yes, they did.
So they asked me, they asked me specifically about Rick and Dave.
They wanted to know their attendance.
And they didn't ask me about John. But I volunteered that.
Well, once that was said, cause I was sitting right.